Last minute.
We have our list.
For the public comments part or?
Oh, she'll hand that to somebody here in a minute. Good evening. You'll join us on flag salute, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, August the 12th. Approval consent agenda.
Can I make a motion? We approve the the minutes from seven twenty-nine twenty-two forty-four. Um, the approval of payroll totaling two hundred ninety-eight thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. And we approve the accounts payable totaling one million six thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Public comments. It looked like we might have a crowd, so if we've got a lot of people speaking, I'm going to time everybody within reason, so. How many we have signed?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
We've got seven people. Who's first?
Uh, Pete Owens.
Pete. Good evening, Pete.
Commissioners. I'm just a normal Bourbon County citizen. I started coming in here about five months ago. The work on these solar panel deals. Um, first thing I got was statements from the commissioner. There's nothing we can do. Then we got a moratorium till January first, and then we got a solar committee to decide the setbacks. And you're not really going to go off what the committee said. That's just recommendations, as I've been told, correct?
I didn't tell you that, no.
That's what you told me.
No, I didn't, Pete. I don't care what you say. I didn't say that.
I watched the rude behavior for the last five months from two commissioners.
Okay.
Um, if you don't believe me, watch the YouTube videos, watch, you know, you're rude to Mary Pemberton, Sage Hall, myself, and many, many others.
And you wasn't rude to us?
No.
Oh, Pete, get off of it.
No.
Come on.
Are you saying Mary Pemberton's been rude to you?
I didn't say her. I said you. I said you. I didn't say anything about Mary.
Yet.
Yeah, I haven't.
I've got a different level of rude.
I do, too. Go ahead.
Um, you're, we had a group of citizens put together a legal precedence to consider how to control these solar projects. Gave that to you. Come back in. You've refused to give us any kind of legal response to that. Um, the hospital deal, at this point right now, um, I'm, I'm just gonna laugh about that. Those two commissioners received a vote of no confidence. And you lost your primary by over two-thirds to one-third vote.
Do you have anything to do with county business? So, do you have anything to discuss with this commission?
Yeah, I'm calling for your resignation, Jim.
Okay, your time's up. Thank you.
My time shouldn't be up. I should have five minutes.
I'm not giving my resignation unless you're going to pay me to leave.
Well, you should listen to me about.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm calling for your resignation because you're not doing what anybody in the county wants you to do. You're blatantly going down the wrong path.
Okay.
I believe you think you're doing something right, but as a vote of no confidence and the, uh, election is proven, you're not. At the very least, you should resign your chairmanship. And also, at the very least, you guys shouldn't make any decisions. Pay the bills, and that's it. This county's pretty much in limbo until you guys step aside. Another question I got, what, why do you guys keep changing the, the time of the commission meetings?
We had a.
This is the second time you've done this, Jim.
We had a budget work session scheduled for four. County councilor told me that this commissioner was out of town. So I immediately contacted the county clerk because two commissioners are not going to decide on a budget and need all three to be here. We hope we have it next week. And she sent out an amended agenda early enough.
You've got a very short time to get your budget together.
I know the date, Pete. I've been, I know the date. I don't need your help, so.
Well, I'd suggest you worked on.
I, I will.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
Uh, Katie Bowers.
Katie.
She's going to talk about roads and telecommunications.
Good. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Katie Bowers and I live in Hidden Valley, Lake, so. Northwest Bourbon, and my views don't necess, don't necessarily, uh, represent our HOA because I'm on our board as well. So I'm here to ask for what everyone else in the rest of the county needs. And we feel like no one's listening to us and no one wants to, um, go sit down and have conversations about it, so. First is cellular service. Uh, there's been different, uh, variety of members up here, but I was told in twenty-twenty-two, we had poles on the ground ready for cellular service. This is not happening. Um, I am, I am fully cognizant that I'm fortunate enough to have a cell booster. But I have elderly people in my community that can't call nine-one-one. And we can't even get a hold of the police. They're, I don't know what's going on, but, um, that kind of brings in number two. I'm on my fourth shock from my truck. You're talking two thousand dollars. Two thousand dollars. I don't know if the plan was to just ignore Yale Road for whatever, um, reason, but two thousand dollars took money out of our pocket, which meant we couldn't invest it in my children. We couldn't invest it in our community. And on top of already paying taxes, now I get to pay for truck repairs. I'm not the only person. Four people in my family, we've blown four tires. Everybody in my community has either lost a shock, a tire, and we have people on fixed incomes. So we have people that don't have the money to repair their tire. They are worried about groceries. Um, this is something that should have been addressed a very long time ago, and it is only getting worse. So that also leads into the fact that, so I'm very big about helping the elderly and people that are underappreciated. Um, EMS can't make it out to us sometimes. If we have emergencies, it might take an hour for an ambulance to get there. At that point, we are at mercy of either the nurse across the lake or my husband, who's a pharmacist. And that's kind of scary if you're having a cardiac event and we don't have things on hand. Yale Road is essential. It's essential. We have a hundred full-time residents in Hidden Valley. It cannot go unpaved. And every time I call in, you also need to consider the postal service. Our postal service uses that road to give mail, give mail, uh, deliver mail to our entire county, uh, area, about a hundred full-time residents. I helped change or fix a tire yesterday for a mail carrier that just had an entire hole. And then when I spoke to the other mail carrier, the full-time guy, he keeps two spare tires, two, just to address the Northwest County. And that can't be. Cellular service brings commerce. It brings communication with EMS, and then roads bring service, commerce, and helps bring dollars back to this county seat as well, but we can't afford to keep ignoring everyone out there. We're going to have lives lost this winter if we cannot get roads that are suitable. I drive a large truck that is four-wheel drive. Most of my older residents drive smaller cars with no four-wheel drive. There have been times where I haven't been able to leave my lake, even though I have four, four-wheel drive. So we need your help, gentlemen. Um, Brandon has been instrumental in communicating and assisting our HOA. And he is the only reason I know that you guys are even considering these roads. But, uh, and encouragement, we have board meetings on Mondays. I would encourage you, or is it Crookton? Anybody, I would encourage you guys to potentially alter your schedule next year and come in and sit on Uniontown, Redfield, Fulton's, Brandon already attends Mapleton meetings and our HOA meetings, just to see what else is out there, um, because we start this work out.
Now, at one point, sorry, Katie, at one point, you was traveling to all the townships for meetings once a month.
Once a quarter, once a quarter.
Once a quarter.
I do have a question. Why does it take an hour for EMS to get there?
Thanks for that, Paulie. I have no idea.
Nobody really knows. When my, when my son had a seizure two years ago now, and we called nine-one-one, and I'm not blaming the EMS, I'm not blaming part of its road conditions, part of it's just the response, and they gotta drive all the way through Fort Scott to get to fifty-four highway, and then they gotta go. And they gotta go down one county road, and then they gotta go down Yale, which is.
Well, and if you take into account that every gravel road in Kansas is fifty-five miles per hour, there's no way you could drive. And you're probably facing, not lastly for myself, but other people that are, uh, more financially sound and willing to do it, but it's that, yeah, it's a road that's not elsewhere stated that it should not be fifty-five. People are doing it, they have big accidents. It's scary.
Right. And I do know that they can drive with sirens and lights on. They can drive open street limit literally.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm talking about a normal citizen.
Yeah, a normal citizen is fifty-five, yes, but it's, and I don't know why it takes, I really don't. Uh, the biggest, the biggest holdup's got to be trying to get to Fort Scott from the south end of town.
I agree.
To get to the north end of the county.
Not judging EMS or our first responder, but I think it's them. I think it's workers in the, uh, well, uh, healthcare desert. Um, along with that, our police officers keep out there a lot. And so I'm looking at vehicle damage on the daily with this, with this trend coming and.
Well, a portion of Yale Road is on the program this year. Uh, not the entire road because it was split out. Because we had another railroad down south that we ripped up six years ago, and we're just now getting back to that. But we did dedicate so much money to railroad this season, and with hope, no reason why we couldn't finish it next year.
I do believe the footage, and if Eric shows up, I'll ask him exactly, but I think thirty-one hundred feet this year, I think is what's on the agenda for Yale.
We, we voted on a mile.
A mile?
Yeah, we voted on a mile this year.
My final question would be, do you receive funding?
Yes.
For roads?
We do.
Okay. And then what, are you able to give me a breakdown of where that funding goes?
It has to go on hard-service roads. Uh, it could go on ditching, mowing, asphalt, but it was voted on by the voters nineteen ninety-nine or two thousand the first time. So it does go on hard-service road programs, uh.
Do you have the ability to bring it back up for vote?
I don't know. I don't know. You mean to, to vote it out, you mean, or?
No, vote back on what?
Well, it's still on the ballot. It's, we, it has the sun, I think it sunsets in, I don't know. Eight more years. So we, we still have it for eight more years, so. But sales tax is really down a lot, so that's going to put.
Do you have the ability to re-vote to read proportion?
No, you don't vote on proportion. Commission decides. See, we all have districts and we have so many roads.
I'm asking you if you have the ability to reexamine.
To your question, can we reconsider what roads we do this year?
Or upcoming years?
Sure. Well, next year will be decided next March. That will be the work session.
I want to, again, review the, the seriousness of that decision, but my elderly people often, we need to find a way to make sure that they're okay. You don't have a grocery store, by the way, so when, when you have that huge, big freeze for, you know, a week, at least a week here in the middle of the freeze, not there checking because they can't leave, they can't drive, you don't have a grocery store.
I, I think there's three miles total, isn't there?
Of what?
Oh, needs re-overlaid?
The entire road needs overlaid.
Well, yeah, but how much is gravel around? Three or four?
All of it. All of it's gravel. They tore the whole thing up. It's all gravel. The whole eight miles of it, or whatever it is, or nine miles of it.
It's at least four from Mapleton to Hidden Valley and then you have all the way.
Four to Hidden Valley, and then the rest of it is another four or five miles all the way to the, almost the canyon line, so. Um, and as far as telecommunications go, I'm working with our IT department to get a tower. We're going to have to talk to Hidden Valley, your guys' homeowners association. We would like to put a tower on your dam, right out there off the lake.
I know a girl that can help.
And then we'd like to put, so we gotta do some, because what we would like to do is have almost ninety-five to ninety-eight percent coverage for our first responders on the radio to get back to dispatch, right? And in order to do that, we're going to have to put a tower at Hidden Valley, and we're going to put a tower where we got a short one now, and then we're going to move some stuff around. But it's all going to have to come into the budget so we can do that. And then once we have the towers, now you can reach to the, the phone people and have them put their communication devices on them.
So when our power goes out, um, we had a person drive through a power line. It was really fun. Um, when our power goes out, we have a cell service. So if I need to go call the cops, I can leave and drive into, uh, Mountain City. No, I have to go to, yeah, I have to go all the way to Mountain City to get signal. Um, and so, again, that's over twenty minutes lost time, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Who's next, Brandon?
Leroy Kruger.
Leroy Kruger.
Good evening, Leroy.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Um, as some of you know, I'm Leroy Kruger. Um, I won the, the Republican race for, uh, District Three, which granted me zero power. Okay? I still have a Democrat that I have to go against in November. So I have actually won nothing. I have no powers whatsoever. I'm here today because a certain commissioner and Mr. Rob Harrington that's hiding in the back room in there are going around spreading vicious rumors about myself and Mr. Bear Bauer that we are going to ruin this hospital thing, which is not true. We are going to break contracts for, uh, the solar, which everyone knows we can't. And I want the record straight, so you people of Bourbon County know I'm going to do what I promised I'd do for one, and two, don't listen to the negativity of sore losers. Thank you.
I have not heard that. Uh, I said on Facebook, congratulations to David, congratulations to you. I've not heard those rumors. Uh, you can't break those contracts you wanted to, as you just mentioned, and you'd be foolish to fool with Freeman. So good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mark McCoy.
Mark McCoy.
Is four ready?
Okay. Hi, Rob.
Hi. So, since, uh, this is actually not working at all. It's popping and cracking and everything, but I'm going to, first of all, um, can I comment since my name was brought up real quick?
Well, we've almost had enough politics from one meeting.
I agree completely, but it actually goes to.
Been nothing, well, except the, the young lady talked about her road problem, but.
You know what? Don't worry about it, because I'm actually here to talk about something Mr. Kruger brought up. And the fact that I actually had a phone call today, um, and spoke with individuals from the hospital administration and, um, KRI that said that negative things have been said on Facebook about Freeman fleecing them, fleecing us, and the fact that there has been comments made about the five hundred thousand dollars not being paid to them. Um, I would like to bring that, that came from, directly from Freeman and KRI. So if I'm lying, they're lying. So I don't know what to tell you, Mr. Kruger.
Okay, let's continue with business, Rob, please.
With Mr. Who? Ms. Stewart? I didn't have a conversation on the phone with Mrs. Stewart.
Mr. Harrington?
So.
Let's continue with business, please.
Anyway, what I'm saying is, uh, I would appreciate it if we could move on, um, and, um, move on past the negativity and stop talking about Freeman in a negative way and KRI in a negative way, because it is going to affect the hospital. And we have a meeting coming up in the next two, next two weeks, um, with Freeman um, to hopefully, um, negate the negativity that they see towards them. And so I'm just, I came today to ask for that, um, and that alone. And, um, so anyway, um, if everybody could just start being positive about the hospital, um, because it's our only chance of getting one. And, um, if, uh, if we continue to say bad things about Freeman, then there is a possibility they just won't come.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm sure everyone can get over this election and become positive again. Uh, I know I'm, even though I have a request, I'm locked and they leaving. I'm still county commissioner until the last day of December or January fifth. And I'm going to do everything I can in my power to make sure Freeman comes. That's very, very critical to this county or city. Uh, so my job's not done. So when my job's done, I will leave. I promise you that. Because this is the worst job I've ever had in my life. So, so, so thank you, Rob. Anything else?
No, that's it.
But I will stay until I get comfortable that Freeman's here. The negativity, I hope it stops because the state's talking about it as well at the Capitol Building. We're just shooting ourselves in the foot, but it's up to the residents, citizens. Be positive and let's go forward. So, thank you. Anything? Who's next?
Michael Hoyt's the last person on the list.
Michael Hoyt.
Really quick.
I apologize real quick. I want to check one thing. It's starting to pop.
I believe I have found my calling, working that street corner right over there and the street corner down at the Oldsport and National. We have over four hundred and fifty signatures on the petition for the three to five. And I presented you with a resolution that would save us a lot of time and effort in the clerk's office verifying the signatures. I understand you'd like to have a unanimous, uh, discussion on it, so we'll defer this till next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who's next?
That's it for public comment.
All right. Public Works Department. Yes, Eric, there.
There he is.
All right. How are you?
Great.
How's your mom?
She's doing. We'll, we'll leave it at that. Thanks for asking, then.
Monthly culvert report. We have four of them. One for Robert Hickson, one for Jacob DeRosa, one for Britt Shelton, and one for Central Prong M L L C.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, next one. Next one is for a utility permit for Crocan. They will be doing work up in the Fulton and Devon area. I believe it's fiber, so.
Cross any roads or anything?
Yeah, there'll be road crossings.
Boring or flooding or?
They were going to try and bore everything. So, um, they filled out their permit. There's the page it needs.
Your recommendation?
I, I recommend going forward with it. They've been very, very good to work with.
They usually are.
Very good working relationship. And they have paid a three hundred dollar fee for that.
Kind of like when they pay up front.
Yeah.
Pardon me. I said you gotta like it when they pay up front. They want to chase them down.
Okay. Next is a fuel report. You should have had that emailed to you, so.
Yep.
Looks like it's going well for us. So. Next I have a bridge update report. Hundred and Sixtieth and Fern. They're, uh, working on finishing up the dirt work and getting the ditches in along with doing the seeding. Hope to have that open to through traffic, uh, middle of next week, weather permitting.
Yep.
So. The bridge at Sixtieth and Grand, we had a meeting, uh, I believe it's been a couple of weeks ago with KDOT Schwab Eaton on the site. Made a few changes to plans, and that bridge is scheduled to go out to bid in February of twenty twenty-five. Um, and then also working with KDOT on some, uh, bridges that are in our inventory that have been out of commission for many years, and we're going to work to see about getting those off, um, our inventory list.
How did your inspection go, Schwab Eaton?
Very, very well. Um, I've got a book I can bring up here. I forgot to.
Are we gaining?
We, we are gaining. Absolutely, we are gaining. So, that is a, a plus. So I, I'll get a book up here to you. They sent them in a week ago or so, and, uh, yeah, we are. We're, we're making some progress, so, uh, I do like that. Um, asphalt program update. We are have a mile left of our base coat on Eagle Road. Then we will spin around and put the surface coat on. And then when we get done with that, we will adjust and adapt and see which direction we're going to go next. See where our funding's at, as we're well aware, our sales tax is down. So we'll have to adapt and, and and make adjustments where we need to make them. Just so everyone is clear. Make sure they hear that, because I was, we've been upfront from the get-go, Yale Road is going to be rough. It's going to be dusty, but we had to do it in order to get a subbase put back in underneath there, because there was no subbase. It, it was XYZ, and it turned to mush, and, and we had to, we had to work it now. If we want to lower the speed limit, I can look into that. We can post a lot lower speed limit, but just because it's posted doesn't mean that people are going to follow the speed limit, so. Um, and we've also had a hard time of keeping regulatory signs up in that area. For whatever reason, they tend to disappear, so, um, that's kind of where we're at there. It's still on the plan to do a mile of it this year, I believe. I don't have the exact numbers, the exact footage, but it was.
It was a mile, I believe we voted on.
Close, close to a mile, if I remember correctly. Um, so that is still on the agenda. And then next year, it'll be up to the commission that's here at the table to decide what are plans. We will make recommendations, and the commission has the final say on what.
Do you see any benefit of lowering the speed limit with dust and everything? My, my, your area.
Yeah, of course.
Like you said, they're not going, it's forty at my house, and trust me.
Well, they don't drive fifty-five, so, I mean, I was telling, I told them, I told the kid yesterday to slow down. He flew me the bird, so that's how much he wanted to slow down.
If you don't post it, no one's going to slow down.
Post it.
Well, yeah, we can, we can change it to, I can change it to forty-five. That's fine.
I told Brandon, it's District One. I'll vote whatever he wants to do.
Would you like it to be knocked down to forty-five on Lake Yale Road? Why it's.
What do you think, Eric?
Let me get a recommendation from a actual engineer, so it covers all of us, but I think that's probably a very good idea, and, uh, I think by statute we have to, and I think that we need to have a conversation with Sheriff's Department as well, and I'd be more than glad to, to do that, get their recommendation and input on, on that as well.
I think you're going to find out that Ninety-Fifth Road is going to get torn up, because we're all using Ninety-Fifth now instead of going nowhere to Yale. And one mile, while we appreciate it greatly, will get torn up very quickly, because it's the only one-mile strip. Does that make sense? So if that's all we have, I'm not opposed to forty-five, but even then, I don't, like what he said, it, I don't know if they would obey it. Yeah. I'm just saying, like, fifty-five mile per hour is like a wish. And it's not posted out there, by the way. Neither one is.
It, fifty-five used to be posted.
It's not.
It's supposed to be.
It's posted when you leave Mapleton and go north. I don't see it leaving Mapleton and go.
And with, the sales tax being down, we couldn't do the whole thing this year if we wanted to.
I understand.
It's a target they can go after.
Yeah.
I can tell you, the regulatory speed limit signs were up.
Do you know when?
I'd have to go back.
And I'm not against you, sir. I know people steal stuff, so.
But I can tell you, we cannot keep signs up there for whatever reasons. I do not know what.
Is it the bullet holes that get you?
No, it's pull, knock, take them and remove them, and they're gone.
I'm kidding.
We get plenty of bullet holes as well. We're not sure if those are at us or at the signs, so.
Yeah, no. Uh, I don't see anyone going when you're heading west from Mapleton to Hidden Valley. We don't have a fifty-five. And it could be because they pull it up. But we've had to try and, uh, replace a sign by our school bus stop that was just laying down, and we haven't figured out where that came from.
Yep.
That was my husband and I trying to get that. Yep. So. I get it, people steal stuff. Honestly, I wish I could just convey that message, the. Honestly, I wish I could just convey that message, the HOA, and we are happy to help if we can and pay for stuff if we can. We get donations, but if we don't know, we don't know, that kind of thing, if that makes sense.
So donate a trail cam by us, it's not using, sweet.
Anyone have a Ring doorbell?
Needs one of those.
So, anyhow, that's where we're at on, on that. Would love to be able to go out and asphalt it right away, but we can only do what our budget will allow us to do, so. I do have a request, or asking for permission, I should say. I had a request from a citizen, and then I reached out to the maintenance there at the college. They had a water main break, I wanna say last year, or, I don't know, it's been a little while, but anyhow, their entry coming in off of Horton, the main entry into the college is where the leak was, and they put it back in gravel. They really don't have access to asphalt. I'm asking if we have a little bit left over on one of our projects, which we usually, when we get to the end of a project, we'll have two, three tons left over. I'm asking for permission to be able to go to the college and fix that utility cut for them.
I'm okay with it, as long as we do that on every project, whatever, you know, whatever township or whatever's closest that needs a little.
Usually what.
We dump it off, so.
What we do, but I.
I agree. I'm okay with it, helping the college out, or we get other requests, we can consider those.
Right, and you're looking at asphalt-wise, probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars in asphalt.
Yeah, not much, so.
And we're gonna have to go somewhere with it.
You have to better throw it away, in my opinion, so.
Yeah, I agree.
And that, okay.
You have our blessings.
Okay. Have that. FEMA update, we did have a meeting, and time flies, but last couple of weeks with Kansas Department of Emergency Management and FEMA, everything is moving forward. We're gathering all of our paperwork, and each project we do, we turn paperwork in, and they're working on putting all that together as well, so that way it can be turned in so we can be reimbursed. Just so we know on the reimbursement timeframe, I did reach out to them. It could be weeks, it could be months, or it could be a year or two before we see all of our reimbursement. So, just wanna be upfront with that. We have slowed down a little bit on our repairs or what have you right now, because we have all hands on deck trying to asphalt, to get asphalting done while we are in the asphalt season. Still have crews out replacing culverts. Greater men are still grading roads, working on ditches, and we still have a couple belly dumps running haul and grapple, so.
Okay.
We're, we're still.
Busy.
We're still busy. We know we got a lot of work ahead of us.
Yeah, you guys are doing a good job. We got a lot of compliments.
So, please, please, please be patient with us. We're, I know everybody's road is important to them, but we're, we're trying to get there as best we can, as quick as we can, so. That's where we're at with FEMA. And as I get more information, and we know who exactly is going to be representing us in our area with Kansas Department of Emergency Management, I will keep you posted and updated and let you know. And then the last I have is the, well, I guess I need to see if you have anything for me first.
I do, I do got one question, not to put you on the spot, but I forgot about it until I come in here. Couple of weeks ago, we was talking about the K-Works Handbook.
K-Works Handbook, yes.
You were supposed to put a little committee together and come up with suggestions for some changes.
And I was supposed to find out exactly work route we're gonna go, so I need to finalize that with Susan, and make sure that I have everything, and we will, I know I've had some discussions with various departments, and I've had some individuals in public works step up and say they'd be very interested in being on a safety committee, so.
Okay.
As far as having an actual sit-down around-the-table meeting, we have not had that, but we have.
Well, I'm gonna let you guys handle it however you want.
We have had conversations without having a sit-down meeting, so, anyhow.
Yep.
Yep. That's where I'm at there.
I don't have anything for you.
Okay. Other deal is, I have an executive session there, and I don't remember the exact terminology.
Executive session, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six. How long do you need?
That a motion?
Before you guys go into executive session, can I clarify something?
Certainly.
I just wanna clarify something. After my comments, I went out and spoke with Mr. Kruger, and he assured me that he would vote yes on the subsidy for the hospital, and assured me that Mr. Beerbauer would do the same. I haven't spoken to Mr. Beerbauer, but he assured me that Beerbauer would do the same, so, I'm gonna hold him, I'm gonna hold him a further word and, and thank them very much for upholding what you and Clifton and Mr. Wizenhan has done in the future, so.
My opinion.
I'm not gonna take any credit for that hospital. I was not involved in that. You guys did do a good job for that.
I was involved in it, but let's give all the credit to the citizens of Bourbon County, but it's, it's one of the biggest things ever happened in Bourbon County. Freeman's is a very, very good healthcare program, and we need Bourbon County, and I don't see any of the new commissioners doing anything to stop it. I think they'll work hard.
Okay. Well, they, you have their word. I got their word tonight that they would, they would do it. So that's all I needed to carry on to Freeman, so.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, got a motion?
So I'll make a motion, and we go in, how long do you need?
Five minutes.
For five minutes, go into executive session for KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six, myself, Commissioner Harris.
Justin.
Eric and Justin.
Yep.
Okay, for five minutes?
For five minutes, so we'll be back in.
You'll need your justification down there on the bottom.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Guys are gonna make me get out my glasses.
Can me read it?
Yeah, if you want.
For the preliminary discussion of acquisition of real property. We'll return it at six eleven.
Six eleven.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
It's up to get old. I'm done babysitting this crowd, hopefully it's, yeah. I'll see you in forty minutes.
Okay, make a motion, come into regular session with action. I hear a second?
Second, yep.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'd like to make a motion to allow our Public Works Director to get a contract with the neighbors to the north to purchase the building and four acres for a hundred and two thousand dollars.
Approximately.
Approximately, and we have eighty-five thousand in insurance savings put back to spend on that building. We've been working on this for six years, I think, so. So that's my motion, with the chairman signing the contract.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I do wanna be very clear on the funding. We have been planning for this for a long time. We've been setting money back, so this isn't. We knew the discussions have been in place.
Yeah, this is insurance funds. We're paying cash for it.
Yes.
From damage from a building, so, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there you go, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commission comments?
Yeah. So, since we're not gonna talk about the budget, I will give you that. That is my, that is my idea of what I'm gonna do with the budget. That's the cuts I'm gonna make for the current. The ask for money, along with for next year's budget, to cut the commissioners' pay to twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents. And we do not offer them, because I consider commissioners as part-time employees for the most part. I know that some of these guys have worked trying to get stuff in, but I looked up all the statutes, there's no reason that we have to give any commissioner any insurance whatsoever, so my part of the budget.
That's fine. I don't take it anyways, but I'm not gonna be.
I don't take it either, so. So we'll get no, no insurance benefits as commissioners starting next year in the budget if it's approved. And we will take the pay cut, twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Saving, that would save just on the commissioner's side of it, if we get the commissioners to do it without the insurance and without adding the difference in capers and FICA and all that, the difference of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and one dollars that I will save off the top of the budget.
Good. Okay.
So.
What else?
So. We've got a couple of jobs as commissioners by statute. We are in charge of county property, county buildings, taxes and approving bills. Changing boundaries of cities, we're creating a township. If somebody comes and asks, we can create a township. We can appoint township trustees. We can alter discontinued roads. But in my opinion, one of the top two jobs is to be responsible with the money and do a budget in a timely manner. I asked two weeks ago that we had a budget, and I was denied because somebody was supposed to be gone.
Right.
We were supposed to have one tonight. It's a budget discussion. We could add a budget discussion without all three of us here, without making any decisions. But we decided not to do that. That brings us down to two meetings.
Okay. Well, let me explain to you why I did that, because whatever you and I gotta talk about in a budget discussion, we'd have to do it again with him here. So why repeat when we have two weeks left to do this, and my mind's made up on the budget already. I agree with everything you've got on here. There's not gonna be any increases except the county attorney's office that requests more help because of judge, and the judge upstairs needs ten or twelve thousand dollars for equipment.
So, and I agree with that.
And there will be no other pay raises. The county clerk, the county treasurer, they will not get any increase. CFO position will be done away with, because she's now gonna be the county clerk. That budget can be gone. And I admire you for doing whatever you want to the commissioners, so. I've been doing these budgets for years and years and years. There's no rush. I understand you're, you must be frustrated, but I wasn't gonna talk about budget without third commissioner in it. We just have to repeat it next week, so. If he's not here next week, we'll have to move without him. So you're right, because we have to get it done. So, what else?
I think we're good.
Okay, good, good. I only have one comment. I wanna be perfectly clear to address you, Pete, and anyone else in this building. I am elected commissioner until December thirty-first or whatever, January fifth. I have a job to do. I've done my best to try to do a good job. Haven't pleased everyone. I pleased some, but I will continue to do my job until my time is up, or if I feel like my job is done, I'll leave early. But I will not abandon this position till I know Freeman's secure and some other things are secure. So please don't waste the county's time asking to resign, because you're wasting your time and my time. Because that's my right. I was elected four years ago to finish this term, and I will finish this term. And again, if that's November when I think I'm done, I'll resign. I don't have no problem with that, but I'm not leaving till I know Freeman's secure. I give my word to folks on that and some other things. We need to finish up this setback committee that the people asked for. And as far as you making the comment, me not listening what you're saying, that's incorrect, Pete. I don't care who told you that. That's incorrect.
I've seen it.
Whatever that committee.
I've seen it. I don't have to, no one has to tell me. I've seen it.
This is commission comment. We're not having to discuss. When the audience, when arguing, whatever that committee recommends, I'm gonna ask the committee, commission to adopt it. Now, I don't know how we're gonna enforce it. That'd be up to Justin to guide the commission going forward. If that's what we call special use permit, I don't know what tools we have to enforce that setback. Whatever that committee, at the request of the citizens, recommends, that's what we should do. So, again, I will stay here till my job's done. I was elected once to do this job. I congratulated Mr. Beerbauer on his win. I'm really happy for him. I'm glad I'm going home, so.
Glad you're too.
Well, it's really none of your business, Pete. Yeah, well, I'm glad. I don't know how to put it to you no more.
Good.
So, healing's very mutual, so. So, anyway, that's all I have, so. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I was hoping he'd go, somebody else got something to say, because I was gonna say one more thing.
I know, yeah, I saw that. I was kinda hoping I'd say. I have one more thing to say.
It has to be on.
Yes, sir.